That's here. Call the meeting to order. Will, could everyone please rise for the plug of allegiance?
Plug allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and into roll call, Mr. Lincoln here, Mr. Keg, Mr. Shaver. It's not here, Mr. Becker, Mr. Wirt.
Here.
Ms. Bressler.
Here.
Ms. Drabnik.
Here.
Mayor Keg.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
For our council held an executive session on Tuesday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty P M. To discuss the potential acquisition of real property. And dismissal of Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission filings. They were closed due to insufficient evidence. And also the terms and conditions of an employment of an employee. We have no agenda amendments coming out of executive session, so at this time I will open the floor to public comment. We have anybody online or in person? Jim? Have at it. Yeah, it was me. Nine out of ten answers on voices could be answered with that sentence, so.
Their concern is, okay, first, but the car remained in the spot. It's a really way to get that vehicle wants to stay in the room. One of the other factors is, in the police call, they owe the car. Like tracing license plate, is that too simple? You might add that for no party to do it. The driving share was somebody parked in the sun, temporary, and you also had to come, call the neighbor, because there are people who are away, so you show anything. The thing about part of this thing, though. Is there any way we can possibly have a valid room? So at least the person would have to be, to be with that, like, frankly, we don't see.
I'd direct you though, Matt Keg.
I don't know the full circumstances of that particular incident, so I, I'm not sure exactly how it was handled, but I can look into it, but usually with, is it, is it codes that has it, Chad, that if there's no marking or no license plate, then it is to be towed?
It, it can be, yes, yes, it's inspected or licensed, yes.
Yeah. So there are different options, but I'm not sure what happened with the, this specific incident. I can definitely look into it, though.
It depends on whether it's public private property, obviously.
Yes.
It would be a timeframe to give them to remove it, too.
Mm hmm, yeah, which I'm assuming they would contact the owner of the car, make contact with the owner of the car first.
Most times they do, I can say that much. Most times they do run the plate and make contact. Problem is oftentimes they're out of, they're not from the area, most times, not saying, I don't know about this time.
Well, they're the most expensive tickets in towns, though. They want to keep parking there, they'll find out really quickly.
Also noticed that handicap parking spaces ship out, on the ship. On a private lot, there were the car parked there for two hours with no, no handicap sign whatsoever. But there's still the detail on the surface of the drop off, flat top. But if there was a sign, and the person pulled in the parking space, handicap park, if there was one, it was apparently the moon when they got it, something there, from the very high. But that's private, but that's still irritated, and somebody just take them.
I think we're still responsible, because we have an agreement, I think we still enforce parking there on that lot.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, that's, that, that particular property is different, because we have a parking agreement with the owner. To supply a series of public parking spaces there, so I do believe the, in the, that agreement, we do patrol. We do have the responsibility of patrolling that private piece of property because of that agreement.
I don't know that we have the responsibility to the signage, though.
The signage, no, but that the parking enforcement component.
I can see if we can look into the signage to see if the, that got pushed down on, on accident and was just taken out.
Right.
Or if needs to be replaced.
Right, because our parking enforcement officers and police officers do go in there to enforce parking. Even if there's not a call. You know, because of that agreement, because it's supposed to be public parking, that we have access to our certain portions of the lot, right? So, but I think that was part of the agreement, I haven't referenced it for a little while, but I believe, I do believe that's in there, so. A police officer or P E O. Could have gone on there within the scope of their duties without a call from the property owner, because typically it's the property owner and has to, you know, if someone parks in a, at Target in a handicap spot, you know, it's the lot owner or one of the tenants of one of the businesses in the shopping center or what have you, that would typically call. You know, to, to alleviate that issue versus it being public property.
It's hard to think that, you know. Do that every day, because there's a red truck.
Sure, right, I mean, if you were, if you were talking about, if you, I don't know if you're referencing Saturday, if you're talking about Saturday when you saw it?
Yes.
Oh, well. That's almost an impossibility. You know, those days, it's very difficult unless the offense is extremely egregious. You know, it's kind of what you live with about twice a year on that day for those hours.
Yeah.
Sure.
Questions to remember, Tyler? You still have the authority? Handicapping, Nick? Is that being an orange, because over handicapped ordinances?
I'm not sure.
The designation of the spots, no.
But at this point, we can look into it, I don't think we need to.
Yeah, no, we can look into it. Anyone else? Tina?
I'm speaking for West Reading Business Center. Thank you to council and everybody that helped support Fall Fest, it was very successful for everybody. Business owners felt that it was a great day, much needed, and I think the big thing too is, is that a lot of people have felt that Fall Fest would becoming a drinking fest. And then so a couple of comments we got was that they were scared to be drunk or carrying one, so if there was a crowd like that, it was gonna be killed by each other, but. So thank you to everybody for cleaning. Sunday I saw Patrick and crew out and the streets looked really nice. Thank you from everybody.
Sam was out doing Fifth Ave, my daughter and I did Penn Avenue, I think Maureen Hasty also helped over on the other side.
A million cigarette butts up from around the hospital, so that was.
And I found a TV down at the cloverleaf.
Wasn't working?
Nope.
Wow.
Straight to the trash. All right, anyone else for public comment? Natalie's right behind you, she had gone first.
I'm just wondering, the memorial down at the park. Flags, they really, I don't know what department is in charge of putting new flags. And that really looks terrible, and the black stuff all over the memorial, I don't know if that's recreation, if that's.
I think that was a.
I actually, me and Dave had a conversation next week, that's not be clean. I want to call out to, I noticed that the idea went down, there's the drain, there's black stuff running off of it. I want to call over and see what I have to use on them, because I think they take a special cleaning, headstones.
But it just, and I'm prepared to, you know.
I said the same thing to David, too.
Usually there were, I believe, volunteers that helped clean that up and replace flags on a routine basis.
We always did it, and I always made. I'll always do. But.
I said, I did that, but the cleaning, I'm going to take responsibility for cleaning it.
No, I just wondered if he's responsible for cleaning it. Well, I mean, I did it when I was on recreation, I'm just kidding.
I'm sure that's something we can pass to recreation again. Yeah, absolutely.
Flags and razor, easy enough, so.
Flag shop. All I know is the flag shop and it's on. And you go past Golly's, and you go on to that hallway. She's really very nice, she, she was the one who gave us a lot of flags to be given. Because we blocked it down, the flag holder was wrong, you know, they usually give us, they give us a really good class. If you pull them, you know, works. But it just really looked. These black dudes.
Thank you for saying something.
I was gonna, I was gonna get down and I was just gonna remove everything, but I thought, again, and, you know, the police will come along. And then the other thing, the last, since the weather's gotten, you know, a little bit cooler. The triangle on Sunset, where Sunset and Third and Montman. Uh, has become a playground.
Mm hmm, it's very dangerous.
It's really, really dangerous, and the kids are down there, they're throwing the ball, they're running down, and that's a bad interception. From about four o'clock, well, although you did an interception, but from about four o'clock on, people are cutting to there. They're driving like maniacs, that's not, I, I mean, I just came here and thought, I don't want to be growing the mountains. You get to climbing the trees, they're destroying your tree. But it's just become a playground.
As nice as it, as it is that they have a spot to play, like, I've literally watched them, like, kick the ball into the street and almost get hit, like, numerous times, it's.
Sometimes they throw the ball at the far end.
Oh, yeah, it's really dangerous.
That's, that's kids for you.
Yeah. Well, it's dangerous, it's gonna. Right down the street.
Chris, is that something that can be looked at, T and I? I don't know if that's.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Oddly, it's been on there.
Last week.
Yeah, so we'll be, we'll be looking at that, all right.
Thank you, Natalie.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm with, I would think, Football Parents Association. We just wanted to say thank you, I know that there's been some adjustments that may be in your schedule for the October festival, which we have our homecoming celebration. And we're really looking forward to this.
Yeah.
Thanks. Sure, Mr. DeGeneres.
I'm not a resident, but I hope I can speak a couple minutes about your contract, I'm Al DeGeneres, I'm with J P Mascow and Sides. I know you're gonna take action tonight. Just wanted to give you.
Hold on a second. It's on the agenda later, do we want to have any conversation now, or do you just want to wait until it's on the agenda as a later item?
I'm fine with allowing him to speak later while we're discussing it. If you're okay with that?
Sure.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? All right, seeing none, I will close the floor to public comment and introduce Ms. Beth Cole here for the Reading Hospital Road Run.
Good evening, council. President has indicated Beth Cole, Friends of the Reading Hospital here tonight on behalf of our fundraising event held every October, the Reading Hospital Road Run. And we've been doing this event back here in the borough, Wyomissing, and pieces of the city and other surrounding municipalities. Since twenty nineteen is when we brought it back into the hospital. I'm before you tonight with, I guess, I'll check with Mr. Murray. Is our permit been approved, or is that on the table tonight as well for final action? Or is this just the fee waiver that was submitted?
Uh, the permit for the roads?
So, of the special event comment.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
That, that, okay.
Yeah, that's been, that was approved already.
I thought that was. So we have an approved special event permit for the event, working with the staff and the chief on logistics. So I'm here tonight for the request for fee waiver for the cost of the rental of the barricades and other traffic that's been evolved for profit. The Friends of the Hospital do a lot of fundraising, they've been to the community. We try to be a good partner with the hospital with the borough, I was recently doing e-bikes to the borough and the city. We are fully committed to paying all of the costs of the labor associated on both public works and the police time that are funded. And so that is the request that we have tonight, I don't know if we have a copy of our application. Happy to answer any questions.
Approved already, so.
We usually waive this yearly, I would be in favor of it.
Was her probably first and only three oh vote.
Mm hmm.
Um, does anybody have any questions for the road run?
In this hall. I did the half marathon last year, and I'm still recovering. Plenty of time, plenty of time.
He did that with no warming up either, he just, I'm gonna run a half marathon pretty much.
Cold turkey.
Yep. All right, seeing no questions, looking for emotion then. Motion made by Mr. Lincoln, second, second by Mr. Keg, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, all opposed, motion carries.
Please, gentlemen, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Call your friends and neighbors to come out and cheer, even if they're not running.
Well, do. All right.
Good night.
Next up is the approval of the minutes before you, you have the August fifteenth regular meeting, August twenty ninth budget meeting, and September ninth budget meeting tis the season, so looking for consideration to approve all three of those minutes.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Wirt.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bressler, all in favor?
Hi.
All opposed, motion carries. Into ordinances and resolutions, first up is ordinance eleven seventy-three, which is the animals for the code red, code blue, which would prohibit an animal from being kept outdoors during extreme hot or cold weather conditions. So looking, it's been advertised, so looking to adopt it. Look for motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Keg.
Second.
Second by Ms. Drabnik, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up is ordinance eleven seventy-four, which is for the Pension Advisory Committee. This was to establish and enabling ordinance of the committee, accept letters of resignation and appointment of members, so basically it's going to structure that committee in a way that has all of the stakeholders involved from the borough to council to the police union, all the above. And it's a little bit more defined as to who can sit on that committee. Does anybody have any questions on that? Otherwise, looking for approval. So, motion made by Mr. Lincoln, second, second by Mr. Keg, all in favor?
Bye.
Bye, all opposed, motion carries. Next up is, we're looking to authorize the advertisement of an amendment relocating a handicap parking space in the one hundred block of Tall, Papa Hocken Avenue. And also add to the list of one-way streets to include Junianna Street from Walnut to Olive and Holland Square from Lakeview to Lakeview. The only chance that you'll have to hear that, so, does anybody have any questions in regards to the ordinance? I'll make that motion. Motion made by Mr. Keg. Second. Second by Mr. Lincoln, all in favor?
Hi.
All opposed, motion carries. And next up is resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty, which is the extension of local disaster emergency, and looking to extend it through our Wednesday, October eighteenth council meeting. Does anybody have any questions on that? We are making progress, slow progress, but progress nonetheless down there, so. Looking for consideration to adopt the extension.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Drabnik. Second, second by Mr. Lincoln, all in favor?
Hi.
All opposed, motion carries. Onto consultants reports, Stan, you have anything? All right, and we'll jump into the engineers report, Ms. Pamela.
I didn't know everybody, and yes, it's beautiful. The other one, I want to. And there are fabrics, no, a, up in twenty twenty-three road project, Carrie, Chip and I talked, there are a couple punchless items. So, and then Cindy advised me, just as President just said, that the October seventeenth council meeting is switching to Wednesday, October eighteenth, but I will be attending that. So the final payment application for H and K for the twenty twenty-three road project will be considered by rural council at that meeting. The D C E D Green Lake Go grant was awarded, I did the research, the amount that was awarded was two thousand and nine dollars, nine hundred and seventy-five and sixty cents. With the bill match of fifty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety and change. So our office will assist as appropriate, and there are severalized intersections involved, there's Foreland, South Fifth Avenue and Franklin Street, South Fifth Avenue and Chestnut Street, South Fifth Avenue and Museum Road and Reading Hospital Drive. And the fourth and final is Museum Road, Parkside Drive North and Sycamore. And I understand that is the next grant for the Green Lake Go, we'll do another round of as well. So we keep applying, and we seem to be getting these, and it's just great to, again, upgrade these with L E Ds and all pedestrian buttons and all sorts of good things that keep, keep the borough up to date with the A D A, especially the A D A requirements. We met with, for the Commonwealth Financing Authority and L S A Grant, thanks to the mayor who did that initial application. We met with the B S G I, which is Berkshire Systems Group Incorporated, they are a contractor who will be awarded this contract, I've already been awarded a contract, we are just assembling the contract, because they are co-stars approved. We do not need to bid, as long as we follow all the guidelines for the C F A, D C E D, and local sheriff count, we will be golden and we'll get all the reimbursements for a tax call. Two hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars, I think.
Sounds not right.
It's close.
It would be a few sets, no, anyway. Now, unfortunately, there's no other funding, so any engineering, any administration, legal, and contingencies are not included in this amount, but we are trying to budget accordingly, and I have shared with me the percentages of insurance, of those with twenty twenty-four budget as needed. We met also with the chief, and we'd like to consider, we're gonna pick his grant. And I sent information to Dean and Cindy about the traffic circle upgrades, we're remarking of everything, old signs, pedestrian safety, license plate readers, and home recognition, and some of these others that you can submit as another L S A, local sheriff account, you can do more than one, you will do November thirty. Okay, so I'm excited, we already had a lot of that innovation, you got your fingertips, and you could break, and you could just follow through from one grant, build on another grant, and again, keep going, just like the Green Lake goes. So, mayor, that's very exciting, and Dean, you did push the chief a little bit to start.
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna meet with him tomorrow, so I'll make sure to chat with him.
Okay.
If you need more information, you can let me know, and again, I can assist with the grant applications, and make sure that we do a ten percent engineering, there's no match, we've got to include ten percent engineering, two percent legal and admin, and five percent contingency. And there's no match, but let's put it in the application now.
Chad.
He's trying to get Tornelli in, Tornelli was.
Oh, is he?
Yeah, Tornelli was the Zoom user. And you guys told to kick him out, and now he's, can't get back in, so he thinks he's banned.
Well, he was asked his first name, the last name, so.
Apparently he had the phone down listening, and then he sent me a text and said, I think I just got banned from my Zoom meeting, does this mean I'm fired? And I said, you're getting back in, we're working on it.
Uh, he will.
He will.
That's.
Chad, did you send the link then?
I think I did, I said it again.
All right, let's keep moving.
Give me first it, and then tickle ball for it again, well, okay, from parking.
Pamela, I'll get with you tomorrow on that, because I just talked to Tim Crawl earlier.
I said, Tim Crawl.
End of rate.
Okay.
Acting Public Works Director of this.
Uh, I, yeah, I guess, unless they made him the official.
End of rate.
Job.
Doesn't it?
No. Uh, not the known number yet.
Good.
Okay.
Keep going.
I chatted with Carrie again before I finalized the report. The design for the four, four doors at the fire company, we're now on the design project, that takes the most, the fabrication is not that long, actually the design is complete. So good news that is a motion, we're hoping it's can be installed before the end of the year, right, Carrie?
They're saying they are.
Excellent, okay. ADA grant decision is not expected until November. Parking lots, manager and I can coordinate on the parking lots. And the last one here, I need to specify the pump station, my insurance reports are always there every month. The five hundred block, Prime Street, grant application, again, the fall of twenty twenty-three, nor the updates, but then we'll circle back to the solid waste and the strike and bids. And I need some assistance from the borough solicitor on what the rural council would like to do with the bids that we just received.
At this time, is it appropriate for Mr. DeGeneres to speak? Al, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, members of council, my name is Al DeGeneres. I'm definitely down, I'm not forgetting about Sarah, so I've worked with the company for a little bit. Over two years, part of my job is working on our bids, our bids, and then reviewing the bids, so I'm very familiar with Rose's dissertation. And I would note, you know, we enjoy a good relationship with the borough, we appreciate the opportunity to review the past, what has been reflected previously in disposal to find your customers, but I just wanted to talk to you for a couple of minutes about what's before you tonight. And I, I don't know if you've all saw the letter I sent to your borough manager, if he sort of related it to you.
I did not, sorry.
It just came in last night.
Uh, it just came in last night.
I have not. I wanted to see the letter, because just a couple of things attached to it, I'd like to be able to take a look at it when I speak to, if I could, a couple attachments, as I said.
Thank you.
Part of my responsibility is reviewing the bids, and so I've worked on our, I worked on your bid. I know what your bid asked for, and I know what the numbers came in at. And I'm gonna assume that my, that all of our bid is not responsive, and that you're, you're giving your opinion. I didn't review it, but based upon my familiarity with our company, and some of the disposal and recycling capacity requirements, I'm gonna talk to you about our bid, assuming we're the lowest responsible, responsible bidder. So with that in mind, as I said in my letter, you obviously will give this, give this advice, you have one or two options, you can reject these bids and re-advertise and rebid again, or you can look at our company's bid. And I work with the contractor of our company, and respectfully, I would suggest that you should really seriously give consideration to ordering a company. I know the price has increased. But I have to be candid with you, and I'm sure you recognize that the pandemic and state of the economy, things have changed drastically the last few years. In this letter, on the first page, I noted for you, and I won't take your time to go through these things, but the eight things that the price increases, and how much things have increased. The truck costs have increased, the interest rates, you see what's happening with that, wages, repairs, insurance, all these costs are increasing. And what does that mean? That means that the services we provide at a level, at the cost we did three and five years ago, have changed drastically. And, and, you know, how can I say that to you? Well, I reviewed all the bids that have been in the area, and I've attended meetings. And if you look at the attachment, I tried to find four contracts or three contracts that were similar two times a week, because I want, I thought it was important that you saw what similar communities that ask for two-time a week service. And if you see these two times a week service, your monthly average charge per resident for the three years is thirty-seven dollars and forty-four cents. You can see what Coopasburg, a community, and Lehigh County, they're priced more than double with our service, a little more lower Providence Township and the Borough of Bristol. I really wanted you to take a look at. I really wanted you to take a look at the per week charge your residents would pay for two times a week trash collection and one time a week recycling. I'm not being cavalier with your, your budget or your finance. I can, I can look all the eye and tell you that send a four hundred thousand dollar truck, as I said in my letter, with a driver, experienced C D L driver, two people in the pack, at the back. Uh, ensure that vehicle pay every, all the necessary costs related to that. Each collection costs two dollars and eighty-eight cents, if you look at it that way. And that comes out that little more than a cup of coffee, I doubt it. And it clears that instead, your price is comparable, in fact, more favorable to similar communities, not only here at two times a week, but turn the page and look at the second attachment I showed you or enclosure, that I tried to find communities that were like yours, your neighboring community, why I'm missing. I went to their borough hall, borough hall. Their, their cost more than double. Their one time a week, and their cost per unit per month is three dollars, thirty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. Uh, so you can see that your price thirty-seven dollars and some cents really is, is very favorable for what's going on in the economy right now. Why did you only get two bids? You looked at these contracts that we were, we were awarded, and they know I didn't put on, on these for you to consider. Over half of the contracts we got, we already known that. Uh, the pandemic not only wreaked havoc on the country, but exceptionally wreaked havoc on our industry with all these costing supply chains, labor supplies, uh, all these issues. And so companies, uh, other than our company, uh, our, our challenge to service what they have and we're, we're making a business decision because of the uncertainty in the economy, but not paying long-term contracts. You know, why are we able to bid a long-term contract in your borough? Well, we're not a national public company. Waste Management is a fifteen billion dollar company. Republic goes a landfill, and they're a multi-hillary company. But what we are in this region is we are the strongest company that has the best infrastructure locally. We have a landfill, a recycle, a materials recycling facility, we just spent twenty million dollars on three or four years ago, and a homing division, all within stone steps. So frankly, uh, one of the reasons why you're probably didn't get bids from responsive and responsible companies is, or one of those reasons I said, you know, they can't compete with the network we have right here. We don't have that network everywhere, but we have it here. And or for business reasons, they don't want to bid long term, and or they're not, they're not uh, bidding on new contracts. So, uh, I don't want to take any more of your time. I know, I know the cost is, is, is a jump. When I put these numbers down, I gave you these numbers from three years ago, frankly. I changed it because your bid was five years ago. Increases have even been a little more in five years, but I can tell you, you, you go to the grocery store, you buy gas, you order equipment, you see what's going on in the economy. It's not changing. I'll tell you that in the next three, five years, it's going to get worse. The slow of capacity is going to be more in demand. And while you're playing your budget for the next three years, certainly this is a three-year, what, two, one-year options. While you're playing your budget for the next three years, you, you have the opportunity to, to lock in at this monthly rate of thirty-seven dollars and forty-four cents for your resident, or this eight dollars a week are broken down by collection. And I suspect that if you throw these bids out, I don't have a crystal ball, but which is the reason why other companies didn't bid. And this company that currently serves you, current, currently services you, I don't know what their service level is, but I know what our service level is. Like, I think you had our company before, we're a local, a born and bred operation, our headquarters right down in Logan, Montgomery County. But when you write the check and pay J T Mascara's, it does go to some faraway place, and everywhere we do business, we participate. And and I can honestly tell you that, that it would be in your best interest to award a contract today and not rebid. Things are changing. Uh, and hopefully, uh, you'll look at this and not say, this is such an increase of three years ago or five years ago that you can't afford it, but look at it, see the proof, see the pudding of what the other communities have been awarding contracts in the last twelve months. The final point I want to make, I appreciate your time, is twelve months ago, the price increase was at one point. And in the last six months, it's still continues to increase. So the price today may not be what the price is in three months or six months. And certainly not in a year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I appreciate your time. You know, we value the opportunity to service your borough.
Does anybody have any questions? All right, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, this time, if Mr. Hollenbach has anything
Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Hi, my, my name's Brad Hollenbaum. I'm the owner of Hollenbaum's Trash and Recycling. And, uh, we actually service your borough, your borough now under Edgar Holland disposal, which we purchased, um, a year and a half ago. Uh, and we've been expanding in Burf County. We bought up three different trash companies now in the county within the past two years. Um, and we're, we're looking at bidding on more municipality work like you guys have. I, I believe the price I gave you is a fair, and it is, and it is the lowest bid that you guys got. His price, I mean, some, some large companies, they have a playbook. They bid high, and then they throw all kinds of stuff in the air and, and hopefully, the council listens to that guy and, and they take their bid. I mean, we are doing your contract now. We are not losing money doing your contract, and it increased, which you can see our price is more than what you're paying now. And I believe we will have no issue at all doing the job and doing it for that price. Um, are we, are we as big as J P Mascara? No, we are not. We're a family-owned company. I mean, I own the company myself with my wife. I mean, we have forty-five trucks. We service six different counties. Um, we are growing. Six years ago, I had two trucks. I mean, we are a growing company, and the reason a lot of smaller companies don't bid on contracts like yours, which he didn't explain to you, is like the bond issue. Four years ago, I couldn't bid on your contract because we weren't a large enough company to get the bond to be able to bid. And that's why a lot of companies don't bid on these kind of contract work, because the stuff they need, they can't get. Uh, and some of the contracts he listed, the requirements that they have in certain ones of them contracts, I didn't bid on because we still couldn't get them because they're a much bigger community than what you guys are. I mean, I think we're, we're more than able to do your work. I think you guys are happy with what we're doing now. I mean, that's, that's, I think you should vote tonight to award it, because I don't know where the bids will come in if you do it again. I mean, right now, his bid is nine hundred thousand dollars more over a three-year period. I think if I was the resident in West Reading, that would be a tough pill to swallow when council would vote to approve a, a contract that is that much more. It's not even close. And I guarantee you, we can do the work and for that price. I mean, if you guys have any questions, you can ask me. I mean, I'm more than willing to answer whatever you have.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Hollenbach? All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so at this time, we should probably explain the, uh, bid. So there were two bidders for the, uh, waste and recyclable collection. Uh, there were two options that they ended up bidding on. Both of the options were because they have their own uh, specific place that they would like to take the trash and recycling. Uh, so they opted for those two bids. The first option was for the twice-a-week bulk item pickup with a tag service, so people would be able to utilize bulk pickup more often. Um, but pay for the convenience of doing so, which would help offset some things. Uh, J P Mascaro was at two million, five hundred sixty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars. Hollenbach was at one million, six hundred sixty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars, a difference of just about nine hundred thousand for option one. Option two, you're at one million, nine hundred sixty-two thousand, three hundred ninety-six dollars uh, from Mascaro versus one million, eight thousand, nine hundred dollars from Hollenbaum. And that would be for the consistent service that we've, well, I should say, for the same service that we're currently receiving. Uh, it would be for once a month bulk pickup uh, two times a week, recycling once a week. So those are the differences between the two options, uh, both of which separated by roughly nine hundred thousand between Mascaro and Hollenbaum. So if you break it down into, if you look at option three, right now, our current contract is about two hundred forty-five dollars, or two hundred forty-five thousand, twenty-eight dollars for trash and recycling pickup that are paid to the hauler itself. That is not including any drop-off at the, uh, at the waste management site. Uh, for instance, so compared to that number, J P Mascaro for option two would be roughly six hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred ninety-eight dollars, and Hollenbaum would be three hundred thirty-six thousand, three hundred dollars. So there's your price breakdown between J P and Hollenbaum. There is also an issue with Hollenbaum's submission to the borough. Uh, it is likely defective in a handful of ways, uh, that we were not quite certain if it could be remedied, uh, considering the price difference. Do we have any indication of that?
So, yeah, so the, the answer to the question is this. There were some deficiencies in their bid that, uh, they didn't provide information that was required under the Um, as a result, I believe, looking at it, the, the conclusion was to at this point, and you can always reject all bids. You have the option to do that at any time, and then you can rebid. Um, the risk is, as you've heard, both sides have told you, they're coming in higher, essentially. So that's the risk that you have doing that. The, the, the issue now is if those deficiencies were not properly cured or were not, were substantive deficiencies, then, um, ultimately, you end up with a bid challenge, and we end up just going through litigation. What I think the best course of action is at this point in time, understanding the risk of the higher bids is you reject all bids. We put it back out, let everybody clean up their, their, their bids, and we see where it goes.
And there were more than just the two options in our RFP, correct?
There were. Option three and four were for selecting our own, um, place to dispose of the trash and recycling. That we would have control over that.
And no one provided bids on that.
We were not provided bids on either option three or four. But four options were provided in the bid packet.
And we can, excuse me, panelists, we can always tweak the package again if there's other options that the borough council wants to before it would need to be advertised if you feel only about one way or the other. Um, and Dan's office created the bid spec, so they're very capable of inserting other options or other language to make sure it's very clear down the road. That would be my suggestion, reject, and if we need to make any documents, would be my recommendation.
All right, discuss. Does anybody have any questions or?
Did you say before we determined cost savings to go to one trash pickup instead of two was not very significant?
In the past, when we've done it, but we can certainly I'd also like to see the tag program maybe scaled back from twice a week, because that seemed to be a major sticking point in the price jump. Um, maybe scaling that back to once a week or bi-weekly or once a month or whatever.
Yeah, I think we, it would be worth exploring that a little bit more.
And an option to reduce to one pickup a week.
One trash.
One trash.
Just curious.
Does anybody have any other?
I, I think we'll find that that's not going to make a huge difference.
Yeah, that's what we've seen in the past.
Well, and I looked recently when Exeter had all of that going on. Um, everybody was getting their own individual hauler, and they determined that it really wasn't that much difference between ones and it was really nominal.
You would think.
Yeah. And even if it is, I mean, well, I mean, what's the cutoff for significant savings? Like, you know, everyone has their own number in their head about how much money saved would be a good option to go from two to one. Me personally, it'd have to be a hell of a lot of money. Because I think a lot of people in town would get pretty miffed pretty quick if you went from two to one.
Yeah.
I'd need two trash cans.
And you'd still be paying probably more.
Heck of a lot more trash being blown down alleys as like every pickup is just mounds of trash um, uh, outside of every house, because, uh, you know, they forgot the week prior or someone was sick in the house and they, they didn't pull out the can. So I think, you know, it would have to be significant savings for me to go down from two to one.
I agree. Certainly spit it out, see what comes back.
I like the idea of less truck, truck, just environmentally, it seems like a good idea too, but
But then we add
that one.
Holding on to trash for a full week, that currently don't have to now.
Right.
What you're gonna see people doing is illegally dumping their trash in business owners' dumpsters.
Or out on Penn Avenue. The trash cans out front to just dispose of their personal trash from their apartments. It's been a thing. So. And certainly more rodent varman, you know, you run the risk of that too with Gave up on Zoom, didn't you?
Yeah, this guy kicked me out.
Didn't answer his question. Does anybody have any other items of doubt for the, uh, collection, transportation of solid waste and recyclables? Uh, briefly, Jim. Yeah, I, right now, those are, I mean, they're open bids, but we're, we haven't decided on anything yet, so no. At this time, willing to share.
It's not the system that's, no, the bid that was submitted to, to potentially be awarded the contract.
Was missing information.
Were missed, it was missing information that they needed to have on the, on the, on the
So at the end of the bid packet, there is a list of things that are needed, but there are also things within the bid itself that need to be submitted. So, you know, the bullet point seven or whatever it was, was only what he had submitted, but there were other things within the other bullet points that also need to be submitted at that time. If that helps clarify things a little bit.
Hi, this is Brad Hollenbaum again. Um, I know.
At this point, Mr. Hollenbach, you had your opportunity. Unless council wants to entertain more comment, I think you're at the point where you need to make a decision.
Okay, both of you had your opportunities to speak, so I think we're ready to make a decision here. Um, so looking for a consideration to either accept or reject all bids received for the collection of transportation, solid waste and recyclable materials, uh, and to proceed accordingly with whatever decision that we decide.
I move to reject the bids.
Motion made by Mr. Lincoln to reject bids.
Second.
Uh, second by Ms. Dravnik, all in favor. All opposed. Motion carries. Encouraged. Sure, encourage them both to bid again this next cycle.
Come on, students, again, so I'll work with, um, Dean and Dan Becker to he would like to bring it in for the October. So, it's a budgeting, uh, it's still
So you want to have it re-did before you want to authorize October, or you want to authorize it now?
Now, because it's budget time in my case.
Could be able to, because we're not entering into a contract with this.
No, you don't have to. I mean, it was all, that was all part of the discussion that was here.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, so you're fine.
Proceed accordingly.
Right, exactly.
Do we need to see the revised?
That's up to you, I think. I mean, I think if there's some items that
We would have next week if we're able to get it done.
I guess that is my question, so.
It's gonna be done within a week. We'll look at it again next Tuesday and be prepared to bid it out then.
Authorize the bid next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Is there, if there's any other options that you guys want to see, do we, or do you let us know?
Do we need the landfill? The landfill expires in this year, right?
Yes, that's all part of it.
That's all part of it. Fantastic. Well, we did look at yard waste pickup, right? We always do that, but it's
We discussed it.
They did not include.
We withdrew the yard waste because
We have other
Kerry and the guys were
Because of other ideas, okay.
Yeah.
It's been increasing down at the actual Public Works garage.
Right.
People have been bringing it in, and we figured it's way cheaper to do it that way than
Yeah, it's been increasing, but I don't think it's increased enough that it'd be beneficial to add on to the current structure as of yet. So we're, I, we talked in T and I about adding different, implementing different things through the environmental advisory council and with Public Works to try to get more of a need for it.
We can do it internally. I, I much prefer that, if we could figure out not only to have folks voluntarily bring it down, you know, processing the material.
Then if we get that much interest, the next time around, maybe we may include it in the contract.
I'll also put a calendar together of the dates of the advertisement, it has to be twice and all that, and when we're gonna open, et cetera, et cetera.
All right.
Again, I'd like to, I love all this cooperation, it's great, and it's nice to attend such a well organized meeting and. So appreciate.
Thanks.
Go trash.
Appreciate it. Does anybody have any other questions for Pamela? Otherwise, looking for a motion to accept the engineer's report.
So moved, so moved.
Motion made by Mr. Keg, second by Mr. Lincoln, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Everybody take care.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, we'll move along to the council president's report. Uh, I do have one action item, the only other thing that I have to report myself and it was supposed to be. Uh, Mark Ragcliffe, but Mark Docherty with the CRF, we met with Penn State Burks last Friday. Uh, to discuss different options that they could pair with, uh, West Reading for both. Uh, internships, volunteer work, uh, events that we have on the avenue. Creating an event, uh, utilizing Penn State graduates, uh, who are business owners on the avenue. Creating a Penn State kind of themed night that would highlight people who have graduated as a Knitney Lion. So we're hand, yeah, still included.
Or all I think is one, right?
Mm hmm. So there's a handful of things that we talked about, all good things, uh, but we have the, uh, the major stakeholders from Penn State Burks involved in that meeting, so things should be moving along. Uh, rather quickly, so it's not just kicking tires. Uh, we'll actually, we'll be moving on on things shortly. Uh, other than that, we do have one person interested in joining the July fourth ad hoc committee, which we're still short. A number of people. Um, so if anyone would like to volunteer for the committee, uh, option is still out there, still collecting, uh, people who have interest. Not that they're committed a crime or anything, that was the wrong way to phrase that. Uh, but if they're still interested in the committee, we're still accepting resumes. Um, so we do have Stephanie Perret. Is Stephanie here today or she is not?
No.
Okay, uh, you do have her letter of interest in front of you, if you have any questions. Feel free to make them known, otherwise looking for consideration to appoint Stephanie Perret to the July fourth ad hoc committee.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Dravnik.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bressler, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, that is it for my report. Oh, and brief update, uh, junior councilperson, there are some interested parties, but they have not submitted resumes yet, so working at, uh. Speaking with them and trying to. Get them involved. So looking for a motion to accept my report.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Keg.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lincoln, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries on to Dino.
All right, everybody should have a copy of my report in front of you, we got it down to four, only four action items. Doing, keeping it status there for, uh, under, under a handful. So, uh, the first action item is. Consideration of amending the cooperative police service agreement with the city of Reading. To be the primary agency dispatch for calls for the pickleball and basketball court area. Uh, if we remember with this, something we started a couple of years ago, but pumped the brakes on it because of, uh. Noise ordinance we were working on with the city and ruffled some feathers, so we wanted to kind of gear it back and then. Now we're in a better position, we want to make sure we're okay. Richard's smiling, so he knows what we're talking about.
Does anybody have any questions on that action item?
I just had one quick question, I have it, um. It says the primaries, primary reason was because there were calls dispatched for enforcement assistance down there, what what was going on?
Uh, I. Can you get into that, chief?
Yeah, I think one of the biggest issues is when, uh, the callers in the county communication center, because of. The street location there, a lot of those calls are going to the city police department because of the city, this is the street. Um, as opposed to the playground, I don't remember, I don't recall, other than parking issues, which.
Okay.
There being an issue, but it's like actually in the court.
Yeah, I didn't know if we were having an issue.
The county needs to know which, if they're gonna. Dispatch our officers there or if they're gonna kick it down to the, you're running police communication center. This will just say they would do it to us first and then we'd come in the city property, identify that.
Gotcha.
All right. Do we have any questions on that, uh? Cooperative police service agreement with the city of Reading?
Makes sense.
Seeing none, looking for a motion.
Move.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Lincoln, second by Mr. Wirt, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Uh, second action item is consideration to adopt a borough of West Reading safety program as the official safety manual. We finally got it over the top, fine, now we need to get your approval.
There you go, that's it, your fifty-nine page booklet here in your packet. Some light reading for later.
And the committee recommended approval, right?
We did.
Updated based on their feedback.
It is ready to rock and roll.
All right, does anybody have any other questions on the official safety manual of the Borough of West Reading?
So what, uh, uh, what does that do for us? And I, I know it's not coy or stupid. So. For us to have our committee, we get a percentage off of our insurance.
Okay, all right.
This, this is.
Say no more.
This just had to be the official. Know the answer now.
Moving on, looking for.
This isn't gonna labor it. That's what you said, what I needed to hear. Okay. Makes sense, move on.
Uh, looking for a motion to, uh, adopt the safety program.
I'm moved.
Motion made by Ms. Bressler, second by Ms. Dravnik, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And a part of that safety manual, we need consideration to designate Stephanie Burkholder as the Accident and Illness Prevention Program Coordinator. She handles getting everything set up for us and dealing with our insurance company. To do this, so we nominated Stephanie to be the, the program coordinator.
Does anybody have any questions? Otherwise, looking for approval. So moved, motion made by Mr. Keg.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lincoln, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And la- lastly, um, yes, this is the giggle part. Uh, so we had to give you a backstory, we had a borough res, not a borough resident, he was an outside resident from Springtown, I believe. Has this hobby of going to different parklands and public grounds. And using metal detectors, apparently there's a group of people that do this. Some, this gentleman was on Holland Square a couple of weeks ago.
That's so funny.
And 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 he was looking for it, now he was doing it nicely, he was. He was chopping the ground up, lifting it up, and he was going in to find the metal, if it's, if it's like bottle caps or whatever trash. He disposes it in a bucket, or if he finds something, he collects it, while somebody called the, the PD about it. He was stopped, so I'm kind of looking to see what council's, uh, idea is. If we should allow, uh, residents or non-residents to do that on borough owned property.
My concern is you're gonna dig, Chris.
It says on the thing, it says on the thing that he, um, the area he digs up is done in a way that is replaced like a sod plug, so I'm assuming it's kind of like. Goal.
Yeah, it's, it. It like dies for a couple of weeks and then as long as it rains or waters, it comes back. But you need the water.
Yeah, that'll look. I guess. My only question would be. You know, it, while this person sounds to be responsible and how they practice their hobby. If we're allowing metal detecting in general. At what's stopping someone else from coming in?
Right.
Digging and not replacing the grass.
I didn't want to make the decision on my own, so I brought it to council.
Thank you, thank, thank you for doing.
Appreciate that, Dean. Thank you.
I talked to Dan about it.
I mean, you could do it as a license or a permit if you wanted to, I don't know why.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I guess, not to get theoretical, but like, it's, it's recreative, it's designated recreational grounds. Um.
The middle of Holland Square?
No, the park, right, that's where he's talking.
He was in Holland.
Park or our own properties, so in theory you could come on the front of Borough Hall on.
I thought we were just talking about the park.
Now.
You could isolate it to just certain areas.
Could we? I mean, I, I personally, like, walking around in front of Borough Hall, like, digging holes. You know, over in Delaney Circle digging holes, like, I don't, I don't know if. I don't know if that's the smartest idea ever.
Feels like, uh, cops are gonna get called an awful lot.
I mean, I, I was just thinking, I was just, you know, like, like, the definition of someone who's. Participating in a recreational activity, like, on designated ground for recreation. You know, pursuits.
Right.
Whether that's playing a game, running around a track. You know, walking their dog. Whatever, is this considered something, someone who's recreating? You know, and 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 participating something that's safe, you can't go down there and skeet shoot in the park, you know, it's not safe, right? You know, but I mean, if if his intent is to, wherever you own land in Borough of West Reading, I wanted, I wanna. Wave my wand over it. You know. I, I'm not okay with that. Park is a different matter. Um. Will it get in the way of other people utilizing it while he wants to get to a certain particular part of the park?
Is he gonna go dig up our brand new turf that we laid down at the baseball field?
Could.
That's the only issue I have, like, if he wants to detect metal, it's fine, but digging up the.
Can you? Can't you do that activity without the digging, or is everything you're finding? I think it's like in the ground.
Usually this episode, I will give. He found a nineteen twelve silver quarter, a barber quarter on Holland Square.
You already have, you have two ordinances in place already that I think kind of cover it, one is the, the. Uh, damaging public property, so if he's digging up the grass, it's damaging public pro- public property. But you also have three forty-seven dash four, which is taking materials from streets, alleys or public grounds. No person or person shall take any earth, stone or other material from any of the streets, alleys, parks or other public grounds in the borough. There we go, just him taking the coin out of the public ground is technically a violation of.
So we do have an ordinance in place, I, I should have checked with you.
It doesn't specifically speak to metal protection.
And just to add on to this, it's not just him. So somebody else can come along the very next day, dig in the same spots, and now we just have. Yards full, I mean, not yards, just. Borough property just with holes everywhere, like.
Like a drove with metals.
Like Patty Shack, just.
Yeah.
Like gopher holes everywhere, because not everybody's gonna be as respectful, especially if people are actually finding very valuable things. You're gonna see a ton of people start coming down here.
Yeah, Dean is, the park, the park was a dump at one time.
Yeah.
When you dig down there, I can pull thousands and thousands of bottles out every time I dig down. You'd be amazed.
Yeah.
Who knows, but I'll sit down there, so you could have people digging up.
Well, I think it, to, to that end, so we have that ordinance places a muted issue, we can just get rid of this.
I would agree, I would say just follow the ordinance.
It was nice to visit it and talk about it.
Yeah.
Correct.
We all learned something.
They could always solidify if they wanted to by speaking specifically.
So, yeah, I found this as being a kind of an interesting conversation.
Yeah, very.
But I, you know. Uh, if you guys decided you want to do something, craft something to allow it to happen. If you don't want to do something, you want to follow the ordinances that are in place right now, you really anything. You know, I could just tell a gentleman that council did not move to authorize it and prohibit it, so. You know, thank you very much for asking, we appreciate it, no.
Yeah.
I think we can consider tables.
Yep.
All right. Anything else, Dean?
Uh, that's my report, if anybody has any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Dean? Oh, all right, seeing none, looking for approval of the Borough Manager's Report.
I'm moved.
Motion made by Ms. Dravnik.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keg, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries on to the Mayor's Report.
So, um, just events so far, there was a fire police swearing at Borough Hall in August twenty-fourth. The twenty-sixth, I officiated, officiated Emily and Matthew Murray's wedding. Right here at Borough Hall, congratulations, proud Papa. Um, September fifth, we is the swearing in of our new chief, Richard Tornelli, congratulations again. Um. September first, we had an event committee meeting, uh, September second was the West Reading karaoke summer competition, which was phenomenal. Um, September eighth, I attended Bob McLean's featured artist at the Art Gallery Plus, there was another fire police swearing and the Reiki ribbon reopening cutting. Um, was held. September sixteenth was Fall Fest, which was beautiful weather for it, um, it was jam packed, I don't know if you were able to get down there. I had about five panic attacks, which was very great.
Hmm, five beers.
I should have had.
Almost the same thing.
Problem.
One might have prevented the other.
True, true. Allison was offering shots. Um, September seventeenth was the West Reading Fall Cleanup, which was, was very good, um. Limited attendance, however, it was a beautiful day and I'm sure there was, there was other things going on, um. I did talk to Dean earlier, uh, this week about moving the accommodation for Fred. Um, and Kathy to next month in order to give it its due diligence, um, have, give enough time for the family and friends of. Uh, them to be able to accommodate, um, and I. Um, we agreed that was okay, but I just want to make sure council's okay and comfortable with it.
And we'll also do one for, uh, Mr. Randall Henze, who passed away.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, I knew I was, I knew I was.
I got in touch with the family and he'll be here next month.
Okay, perfect, and then we'll make sure to get those done, uh, beforehand, if that's possible, that way they don't have to sit too long. Um, but other than that, that's my, uh, Mayor's Report, um. If you have any questions, let me know.
All right, any questions on the Mayor's Report? Seeing none, looking for approval.
I'm moved.
Motion made by Ms. Dravnik. Second, second by Mr. Lincoln, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries on to department reports and just in time, Chief Tornelli.
You're not banned from Borough Hall.
Uh, yeah, in addition to the report submitted to council, uh, there's two things, one, uh, Fall Fest, we had. You should. No disorder. Crime problems, so to speak, we had two missing juveniles that we looked at very quickly. Um, and that is a, a day for us, which is what we like to see. Um, the other thing is, um, just pretty, pretty basic report, as it started to get settled into, kind of tracking down some. Data here, if there are any types of data points that council wants to see, um, in one of your, or, um, let me know, I'm sure you know. Wherever, I'm starting to sort through some of the, the crime data, some of the, the other information that's, um, available in our reporting system, so. There'll probably be some more additions, uh, reporters, I believe, that. But. For the first two weeks, it's about all I could, uh, put together for y'all.
All right, do we have any questions on the police report? All right, seeing none, looking for approval.
Luke.
Motion made by Mr. Wirt.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keg, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, all good. Thank you, chief, moving on to Public Works, KT.
Do you have a copy of my report in front of you, so? I do, I do have two action items. Have any questions, we're unhappy to answer them, you want to get any action items first or any questions first?
Uh, let's go right into the action items.
The first one, I guess, I don't, I believe you all have in your packets. I was talking to, uh, Bill Murray, I guess, we, a couple other, uh. Local municipalities, talked about building a memorial wall. For, uh, Public Works. Do covering Public Works, water departments, sewer departments, anything that. Involves around it. Um, they would like to actually build it in our park down somewhere near the pickleball court. By doing that, we can get the water fountain in and they need for no cost. This will be built, uh, through donations and through all municipalities chipping in and building it. The, the Public Works Department itself. This is Bill Murray's rendition, it's, uh, seem a little grand, just Mr. Lincoln pointed it out, but. It was an initial drawing, just so you have an idea what they're looking at, but.
I'm all for the water fountain.
Mm hmm.
I just think it needs to scale according to the space that it's.
I understand, it's the big things, we need to.
How many people are standing on this brick pad to drink water at same time?
Thirty.
But it's just, uh, it's a rendition, he, he came up, but just so we have an idea. We take him there, we have to find the right spot down there, we have a couple areas around the pickleball court, we like to put it. With the water fountain, have a water fountain and also an area to fill up, uh. Bottles for people. As they said, it shouldn't cost, it shouldn't cost the borough any money except for a few man hours. But it's all the, any area water throwers get involved, he told me to do all permitting. Through the city, because he said he don't have to deal with certain ones in there. They're responsible with the water tap and fee and all that will be waived. Run the water line in, so it was actually saves some money that way wise.
Anybody have any questions?
No questions, um, I do really appreciate the idea of a water fountain going near the pickleball courts, I'm, just want to say that one more time. If we can eventually get a real bathroom and not a porta potty, I'd be even happier. But I will tolerate this.
Hey, there's probably grant money for that.
Yeah, maybe.
Pickleball bathroom?
Yeah, if you go for that, if you go there right now, it's just porta potties, which at night get very scary.
Depend where we put that, the water fountain, I can tap right off and right there sewer lines, just gotta get permission.
Don't give KT any more ideas.
Who's gonna like clean it and do that?
I would imagine it's us if it's in our.
Yeah, once it, once it, it's probably end up being us.
Hmm, there you go.
Alright, looking for consideration to locate a Public Works Memorial within the park line.
Plus, anybody has any other? I just had one question. Will we see revised?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, no, not gonna be built. I want, usually involved every year. I want you to come down when we say here, I want you to be part of. Saying, yeah, this is an area we like. It won't be done with, with planning to go on with the uh, the step seating. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and change the structure of the park down there. Cause I guess at this point here, it looks like what we'll be doing to digging out and stepping the tiering in-house. They're gonna provide the equipment and the stuff. We're doing it in-house. When that comes. Some of them hills down there, I'm gonna stretch out, use some of that dirt down at the backfill. And I think we have a better area than to put it. We'll probably year out, but. We wanna get that done and I can move that way wise. I think we have a better idea where we can go with this.
So, so the action tonight is just, just to locate, proving the idea of.
Yes, yes.
Let's just locate.
I was just gonna echo.
Yeah, the location and the, and design of it all will be all. By approval of yous, but.
Jim, briefly.
Yes.
Yes, that's what I was trying to stay high.
Alright, any other questions on that action item? Otherwise, looking for approval. So moved. Motion made by Mr. Keg. Second, second by Mr. Lincoln, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
That's okay.
Now, step two. With the. The Newcastle's designed for the Memorial Garden. At the restructure, the way the water is moved down there. It was actually the day they met yous up here, I was actually calling Dean, texting Dean that day. They're saying I gotta do something. They can't go on with this one. Um, met with Nick Johnson. Give my ideas, he gave his ideas and we came up with a plan together. I gave you my drawings and he kinda followed suit with his. I gave you initial paperwork. I called up to uh Terry Hill to get prices on the material. That's at ten thousand something from Terry Hill. That was just for the manholes and the catch basins. I have one catch basin down. I have, I have some tops down there. The metal grates. I'm gonna buy elsewhere than other than them. So what, the paperwork I gave is what they initially quoted me, then I gave you on my drawing. What I think it's gonna cost if we do it in-house. Uh, and I buy the material that I need and the rest of it I should have in hand downs, down at the garage. This uh. Where the stone is here. That is going to be a cement walkway. Actually went in front of a picture for you, but I forgot to. Uh, what we would like to do with that stone walkway. We would like to actually dye it. We're gonna actually. Slope it a little bit and we're gonna stamp it. So it actually looks like a, a, a stone walkway.
Oh yeah, that's really nice.
That does look nice.
We can pass the phone, but um. That's what we're gonna do. That's gonna be a thousand dollars or so for that. The piping. I changed the piping from eighteen, your nearest one went eighteen inches. I have fifteen inches laying down the garage. We'll move that to fifteen. Catch basins. The tops are seven hundred something dollars to, uh, I don't know if you see that price on Terry Hill, but the guy slipped up and told me where he buys them from.
Couldn't have done that. He did.
It's three hundred and sixty-five dollars. Um, I can buy it directly off the guy.
What was that for?
The toppings, I need three metal toppings.
Oh, the grates.
And then the manhole, we're gonna build the manhole ourselves because they want eighteen hundred dollars for a four foot ma- uh. Manhole. I'll build that in-house down to garage. So I'm looking like eight thousand dollars.
No, not.
It's gonna be about eight thousand dollars. What we're gonna do, we're running off. Come off to the side because we're the, UGI's line goes down and across, so I can't go down and meet the other catch basin that way. Yeah, so we'll go off the side and Nick Johnson's telling me that I can dump into that uh. A stone line, the stoning they put off to the side. And that's when we run a twenty-four inch out there. We'll catch two here and I'm on the other one. I'm gonna catch over here and I'm running over to the other. Where that uh.
Where the drain is now.
The drain is now. We'll go make a catch basin. Now I'm gonna dump into that catch basin. We're gonna slope the sidewalk to run to that catch base. So anything gets over that curb shouldn't go into that sidewalk and run down there. And hopefully that's gonna keep the water off. Nick is believing it will. Down the line, not this year. Next year, I'd like to go up to Playground Drive and put a catch basin to and actually run into the fire company's line. I don't wanna overflow that down. I wanna take some of the water that's going down, down that way.
Coming right.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. So Nick's drawing and yours aren't exactly the same, right?
They're probably pretty close.
So he's showing piping. From that manhole to a new end wall. Or reusing the existing end wall.
Yeah, so I'm gonna pull the end wall and reuse that end wall.
So you, that's what you're showing as well?
Yeah, I just didn't put the end wall down there.
Just wanted to make sure I was.
Yeah.
So they're basically showing the same thing.
Yeah. Nick wasn't sure if we can be done. So I did this yesterday and he called today and said, I'll do one real quick and then he sent it over.
Hold on. Um, and is there, did you talk to him at all about, is there permitting required?
He's telling me it's not going to because not changing any fluids already exist. He's already listing these on our uh MS four reports through the state.
Okay.
So he said, when I change anything, we're just restructuring the way it's getting to there. He says there'd be nothing.
Okay.
Cause I actually initially talked, I wanna actually go out through the wall. And drill my own hole and drop it down in, but he said, no, then we're gonna need the permitting.
Right.
And we're getting DEP and it gets ugly that way. This is the best way for now.
Okay, great.
Can't dump into the catch basin, the storm sewers like sixteen feet deep there, otherwise I went into the main trunk. I have that's too deep to get into.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Thank you for all the work you did on smacking this out.
Yeah.
I know, no problem. I think it's a good cause. I just.
Not really, oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
Um, not really a question more so, um, I did have people reach out regarding wanting to donate to the. Um, space after here in Newcastle, so I can also send out emails to see if we can cover any of the costs that may be incurred by the. On the borough side, which would include this if needed.
Be roughly eight thousand dollars, not including man-hours.
Mm-hmm. I'm more than willing to post out those emails.
And we do have uh part of the fund that was set up.
Mm-hmm.
The last portion of that fund, they are keeping it in reserve for us, the uh Berks County Community Foundation. Uh, there is money available for a um memorial of some sort. Now, this memorial is being donated by.
Newcastle.
Newcastle, but. We also need to do work to accommodate that, so I'm sure that if needed, uh, we could also tap.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm basically asking today is do I have permission to move forward with this? We're talking Newcastle. Newcastle says it's gonna be best time for them is the end of October, beginning of November to get in there and plant this. Is when they really wanna get involved. I have the electric area over there. We have that coming off the side of your wall. There's, there's a wires coming there. We can tap in to get any wiring they need. This year, I'd like to address this before they get in there, because I don't wanna dig through what Terry did.
Um, do you have the time to be able to, to do that? I mean, that's very quick. That's very quick. Do you sleep is my next question?
Do you have any concerns with them having to drive equipment over that fresh sidewalk for stamped concrete?
I don't know what the way he's talking to me, it's uh all gonna be hand dug.
Okay.
It's just all plants and stuff.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, there wasn't, there wasn't really like hardscaping outside of the big.
I went out to back on a while, lifted over for him. I'll set it with tobacco. I'll boom it out.
As long as you guys are communicating with each other and just.
Yeah, he was overjoyed about it. He said, they laid it out, but he said he felt bad knowing this was staying where it was and then. He was pretty excited about the idea of us coming in and. And that sidewalks will be really neat. Like I'll show you his pictures and it's. My guy, we hired uh Josh. He done this in his backyard, done a bunch of other places. It's beautiful. It looks like stamp stone. He can dye it gray. And then uh.
Just don't salt it.
Just don't salt it.
My gosh.
After Phil told me that, I was no longer doing it in my backyard. If only half of it sees sun in the winter, so the rest of it is just pure ice.
What did I tell you to do?
No salt on stamped concrete.
Oh, no, no, no.
So I'm doing papers.
Yes, I had UGI down. I had a conversation. UGI comes right inside and then they cut across. Uh, I get, it's marked down a, uh, they actually cut across right there on the end of this uh. That trough we have in there. So that's why we were initially gonna run down in an angle to that, but. Well, the first time UGI came, they showed it was in an angle down to the valve and it's not, we had the engineer come out and. He's wants to know, no, here's where it goes. And then they came up with the maps and reaffirm the engineer's drawing. That's why we decided to come out. He wanted to put a catch basin, but we didn't like the idea of a catch basin with him because I was afraid of hitting the side of being square. So if we can get a manhole in it, we can get the motion of it. They carried a little better and a little less rough on the sides.
Any other questions on the uh improvements to the storm sewer catch basins? Otherwise, looking for a motion to approve. I moved. Motion made by Mr. Lincoln.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kegel in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries on to the Fire Department.
We have.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, sorry.
Yep.
Do we have any uh other questions for KT? Please say no because it's eight thirty.
Uh, good job.
Looking for a motion to approve the Public Works Department Report. So moved. Motion made by Mr. Keg.
Thank you.
Second by Ms. Dravnik, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Sorry, Chad.
That's fine. I'm gonna be the bearer of bad news, but I'm gonna try to be quick. So. For the Fire Chiefs Report, um, we received five people interested in the new engine. Unfortunately, none of them submitted bids. The most recent person who had interest uh said that they may still be interested, but they're just not quite ready to bid yet. I think the logical thing to do is not to panic and it's just to uh request council's permission to extend the bid uh another sixty days.
As long as you're good with housing it.
So, yeah, it, it's fine where it's at right now. So I, my action item for fire would be to request council's permission to extend the bid another sixty days.
And that was part of.
And uh, Dan, I'm assuming you have to readvertise that, but yes, we'll make sure that gets started.
Does anybody have any questions on the extending the bid timeframe another sixty days? So you're not looking for approval?
I'm moved.
Motion made by Ms. Dravnik. Second by Mr. Work, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
That's all I have for fires. If you have any questions, we have to answer.
Alright, any questions on the Fire Department Report?
Is there an update on Western Berks helping with the new bay door?
I have not spoken to them anymore on the topic.
We, we gotta get into the conversations that we have planned.
Okay.
Yep. It originally be that sentiment, but I haven't.
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, looking for a motion to approve the Fire Department Report.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Keg, second by Mr. Lincoln, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Let's look for Chad for codes.
Alright, code support. I have, have two things. One is project midris, but just wanna point out, it's not in this report. Uh, we got a permit for UGI to replace the gas mains in the two to five, two to four hundred blocks, so from second to fifth. On Penn Avenue. Uh, with some of those north connecting streets, mid north cross streets. Um, it's slated to start October second.
Yikes.
Just repaved it.
I just have to pay.
I mean, they're gonna pay to cut again, but still.
And that just did, but they, they pulled those street cut permits in Penn Dot, not through us, so.
And unfortunately, Penn Dot doesn't have the moratorium like we do, so. Yay.
Right.
So there are.
Reaching out to Penn Dot to share with them what we require on our streets when um trenches are cut. And ask that they consider the same.
It's only like two years old.
Yeah.
How many, how many mains?
Uh, one, with the, the main vein that goes up through. They're also doing the laterals that would go to both properties of those.
So are the main that goes down the middle of Penn Avenue?
Correct. Well, it's on, it's more on the north side of Penn Avenue, yes.
Hey.
And what's?
Two hundred block to five hundred block.
Four hundred.
Two hundred to the end of the four hundred block.
So, yeah, basically. They wanna dig up a pipe in the middle of Penn Avenue.
Correct.
For three blocks.
Correct.
How long is that gonna take?
We're saying so that the permit period would end at the end of November.
So two months.
Two months, yeah.
I think that's. Talking to him today, he said he can, right now he can only dig from nine to three by Penn Dot specs.
Regulations. It's not that cold yet.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, cause they're reopening it every morning.
Yeah, and you're talking they had to cut through concrete, so.
Right.
Meeting today, Kerry was there and we did discuss things like backfilling and plates come winter time.
Yeah. And they have to, there's, he, he says what, twenty-one hundred feet and thirty.
Twenty-one hundred total linear feet of, of name.
Does the hospital know this?
Yes, they were there.
The hospital had represented there, yes.
Are they proposing night work?
No, the, the, Penn Dot only allows them to work from seven, uh, nine to.
Ninety-three.
Nine AM.
Right. They were hoping to start at seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, they won't let, they won't allow lane closures during the peak periods in the morning and the afternoon. They could explore overnight work, but I don't know that that would be best for our residents.
Yeah, but also the businesses on Penn Ave. I mean, if it's gonna go in November and December, those are prime like Christmas.
Right.
Time, like the businesses are gonna be affected on the two to four hundred block.
Me Chad had that conversation.
And we do have, and like, I mean, Betsy's Boutique is moving up to.
Where Little Lotus was.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know that we really have any control over it happening or not happening.
I mean, they're saying.
Penn Dot Road. Yeah, especially these days, yeah.
Yeah.
That, now they're claiming that, that you're probably gonna lose your center lane, but they're gonna have both flow of traffic both ways, because that's. The way it looks like on the map, and if I'm wrong, right around the edge of the parking areas to chat. Close to the edge of the parking stalls.
Yeah, there's plans to do double cattle shoots and.
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably moving in both directions.
Yeah, but my guess is you'll, you'll lose your left turn lane to the intersections when they go through those areas, which is gonna be a problem at fifth.
Immediately.
Luckily, and also he did inquire about uh the parking sites.
On the north side.
Oh, it's specified which sides.
I would imagine it only had to be the north side because with the bump outs, the bumper outs actually kinda saved us a little bit.
It just depends where that main is and if they're shifting.
Yeah.
If they need to shift the, the eastbound lane into the south side parking to accommodate the westbound lane, that's gonna be.
Today was the first we got a chance to talk to them about the project, so I mean, we've certainly addressed future concerns with them. I just wanted to get it on your radar so that you knew it was coming with such a short window. Before it started.
I think we wanna make sure that our residents and business owners, not only on Penn Avenue, but. For a wide that use Penn Avenue to get to and from four twenty-two are aware of that upcoming construction work.
And sooner rather than later.
Yeah, website, social media.
Yep.
I got you.
Even if we don't have exact dates yet, I would get that out there.
Gas service to the neighboring properties.
That was discussed. I'm not sure how they're gonna go about that.
UGI called you? Okay.
I mean, I imagine they, imagine they're abandoning the existing main in place, so it probably. Will keep gas service until they actually have to reconnect that lateral.
They were going to insert the new pipe into the existing pipe and they said, no, they were going to. Put in a pipe in, so.
Right. But I would, I would be surprised if they take the old pipe out.
Yeah, he said, though, they would like the way understood when new services across, he said, I. By Cory, he wasn't gonna be able to do all of them. It's gonna, some he's gonna have to slip. But they actually wanted to run new services.
All new services.
Possibility. That's their, their definite plan on how much they're gonna have to dig cross street was, was a little bit unclear.
Yeah.
Street's gonna be a mess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So basically, if you're a business owner in the four hundred block on the north half of Penn Avenue, where basically all the businesses are. You're gonna have a big old fat lump of coal in years, it's Christmas stocking this year, it sounds like.
And there's something we can talk to him, trying to start there and work the other way down, because they shouldn't be shutting down the whole, you know, one time. They should be doing block by block.
We said he wouldn't start fifth.
He wants to start a fifth and go the opposite way, which may be a little bit of help, because that would be, hopefully it'll be out by the end of October. Not that it's great help, but. November and December is your rule, uh, I would imagine is when you're Christmas shopping and stuff starts picking up. So hopefully they'll be out there by November.
Now, are they going to maintain two lanes of traffic in the two hundred block? Or both directions of traffic?
Well, there's a center divider down the middle and there's two lanes there.
Yeah, but. So coming into town is. Cause you have the, the left turn lane, that, I think that's wide enough there at the two hundred block, they could run.
They'll just maintain.
Westbound lane in the westbound side still and just. Cause the, it looks like the new main is gonna be closer to the north side curving than.
Okay, alright. As long as it's not in between those two lanes where we're shutting down that whole area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Make sure we find those old water surfaces uh that.
In the, in the interesting time, I would say if you have any concerns about the project, call them, me, and then we can get them to the. Plenty of right venues.
They certainly just keep us posted as you learn more.
Yeah.
Not that they're gonna tell you or the, or us, but is this like, okay, so for the next five years, they're just gonna replace everything because they're covering their butts. So like for the next five years, the whole borough is gonna get torn to shreds. Because they're worried about two point O down the hill.
I don't know, I can't speak, I can't speak to that, what their intentions are there.
I can tell you this one, I know they dug Penn Avenue how many times since. The event. So I don't know if that's.
No, I know, and we all know. We, we all see the gas sniffer. Car, go every damn day, it's, it's on some street.
Down my garage at lunchtime as a lunch.
Everybody thinks it's, you know, the FBI or whatever, like snooping on us or something, but it's a gas sniffer truck, but, so I mean, we all know, I mean. Liability concerns, you know, or why, well, don't have high dives anymore, and all sorts of other things, you know, that dictate business decisions. So I just, you know, like. I wonder if there's like the, the modicum of a, a liability concern by that company. With infrastructure in this municipality and neighboring municipalities, over the next three to five years, there, I mean, they're just gonna just dig everything up. You know.
Between that and Fast Bridge will be.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
People just be starting. We, we do have the moratorium ordinance that protects us from them digging up streets that were repaved in the last five years.
Sure, but, but they could just say, well, it's an emergency.
Yeah, they, they, that allows them to cut it, when they have to repay the ordinance, they have to repay the entire street.
Well, depends on how big that liability concern is.
You're not wrong.
Alright, anything else that we need to be made aware of?
I'm not regarding that project, but. The, uh, the other thing I wanna bring up is the black two thousand fourteen Ford Taurus that we received as a code vehicle from, uh, the police department. The transmission is dead in that thing, so it went in for some repairs earlier in the year. Uh, Josh, the mechanic had told Kerry Dean and I that the transmission probably wouldn't last until the end of the year, when he was spot on with that assessment. The other day, it, it just dropped out. So I was gonna bring up in, with that knowledge, I was gonna bring up the end of the year to put a vehicle replacement in the budget for next year. Obviously, with it breaking early, I included a whole, uh, little section in, in my, my council. Or I, I don't know if you got a chance to, to read it, I don't wanna waste too much time tonight. But basically, I'm looking for council's permission to, uh, look further into replacing that vehicle this year. Um, it can be used as a, a dual purpose vehicle, since I run fire calls during the day with it most of the time, um, so we could probably split some of the costs between the codes. Department budget and fire department budget to kind of help smooth out the cost across two different departments. Um, talking to Dean, he kind of was looking at Ford Escapes, cuz that was the last, last smaller. Last smaller vehicle that the police department had bought. Realizing that Ford Bronco Sports are pretty much the same price with the added benefit of being four wheel drive, it seems like a no brainer just to go that route.
I had nothing to do with this decision. That Ford Broncos sport sitting out there has nothing to do with this.
And with horses.
Kerry, Kerry, our price guy said that the Broncos are actually two thousand dollars cheaper than the Escapes are coming in.
Right now, Thomas Sano has one coming in that would match the color, the gray for the burrow. At thirty thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars for the burrow's cost through CoStar. Tom, uh, Mandabak has went a little bit off and they went thirty two something for the exact same to CoStar, so.
I'm not gonna put you on the spot and ask you to buy a vehicle tonight, but, um, I talked to, to, uh. Uh, Jeanette about some financing things, she said financing is terrible right now, if the borough can do it. To do it in one lump sum purchase, and, and she kind of stayed, kind of led me to believe that there is some money in some of the funds that, that could offset the cost of purchase of vehicle this. So. What, what I'm basically looking for tonight is council's approval for me to move forward with, with getting some vehicles and getting some pricing to bring back to maybe at next. Or next week's, uh, budget meeting.
I think that makes sense to get the information for, yeah.
I agree.
And with getting it now, it takes it out of putting in the budget for next year, so.
Yeah, I mean, if there's capacity in this year's budget to handle that, I agree, financing right now.
Well, we still have some used vehicles that we have to sell yet, so.
And to your point in your report, you know, your department getting. Old police vehicles, which are used very hard.
It is not our fault.
I don't know, it's just the nature of the beast. A new vehicle would last you quite a long time.
And there's something else, I don't know. I know when I bought the last pickup truck, I'm gonna buy my next one, and probably end up doing the same thing. We could find out what it'll cost for a ten year warranty bumper to bump on him. And then that eliminates ten years of any issues other than gas, tires, brakes, exhaust.
They still offer those?
Yep, I put on the new Dodge I bought. Ninety thousand has one on it, it's bumper to bumper, anything that goes, they're fixing.
Make some pricing options for that for, for.
Yeah.
Need to proceed with. I was asking council for, for approval to continue looking to decide, I didn't know if it needed to be an action item or not, so I just made it an action item just in case.
Needs to be an action item, so it's gonna do it till next month.
Not for him to research it.
That is the coast. I will answer any questions if there are any remaining.
Any other questions for the codes department? Alright, seeing none, looking for approval of the codes report.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Keg. Second by Ms. Dravnik, all in favor. All opposed, motion pair, motion carries, excuse me. Uh, next up is WRCRF, Mark Racleth is not here, but you do have the report in front of you. Obviously, Fall Fest, don't have to touch on that again, uh, we did approve the, uh, Feden Blanc, uh, which is October seventh from five to nine P M. In the pavilion, uh, we had made that, uh, decision during the council meeting. Two Saturdays ago. Uh, to allow alcohol, but only to vendors, so. That will stay the way that it is, and then also a bookstore on October thirteenth. They're still working on the lighting grant, still working on the gateway grant, uh, they are running the design competition right now through Goggle Works and Berks Arts. Uh, within the next thirty days, and they hope to pick a winner by January, and hopefully the project will be slated to start in spring of next year. Uh, so we'll, we will redesign the railroad bridge. Uh, codes grant is currently in process, uh, they're also applying for the LSA grant that was aforementioned by Ms. Pamela, uh, which is due in November. Any questions on the CRF report? Alright, seeing none, looking for approval. Motion made by Ms. Bressler.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keg, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries on to our committee and commission reports, EDI task force, Jen.
There was no meeting this month.
Alright, so we'll move on to recreation commission, I will start with Mike.
We have a copy of my report in front of you, uh, pool is done. Step for egg, we made it. Yeah, we closed the pool on Monday, September fourth, closed out the. Season with our pups at the pool, raised a hundred seventy six dollars to the animal rescue league. Check, and we're never preparing for our haunted house and hay rod. There's a lot of stuff down there from you Natalie, for, for the haunted house, so we're geared up with that. I definitely do, and I appreciate all, all the cool stuff down there, so. But, um, that's pretty much it, so we got the fourteenth and then the twentieth, twenty first with haunted house and hay.
Alright. And then Denise, anything from the commission?
I think that covered it.
Alright. So with nothing else outstanding with recreation, do we have any questions? Otherwise looking for approval. So moved, motion made by Mr. Keg, second, second by Mr. Lincoln, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries, next up is planning commission.
Hey. We did have a, a conditional use application before us for one oh one Franklin Street, which will be taken care of, I believe it's next week. Before the, the, uh, budget meeting, um, for a, uh. An automotive repair shop down there, uh, to replace, uh, what was an HVAC business. So that'll be before council to decide, we did, uh, the commission did a, a, approve a, a motion to. Of, of, of support for that request. Um, we also then moved into our first official meeting. Um, with Thirken Edson regarding our, uh, zoning update, uh, the hefty zoning update, uh, uh, based on hybrid form based codes. So that took up a, a hefty portion of the meeting, but it went very well, and that'll, that'll be the main crux of our. Business over the next couple of months with a couple of other items, time bearing. Sprinkled in for good measure, so if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Any questions on the planning commission report? Seeing none, looking for approval.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Dravnik. Second by Mr. Lincoln, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries, EDC, Phil will stick with you.
I think there are two dates, uh, I mean, two minutes, uh, meeting minutes there for the fourteenth of, uh, August and September eleventh. Um, so we'll need to approve both of those, I will, uh, skip to the most recent meeting. Cuz that's the most up to date information. It looks like, let's see, um, the West Reading Motor Club is getting very, very close to opening, I do believe.
October sixth.
Yeah, I just got an invitation, um, yesterday for, um, soft opening on.
So there'll be a soft opening for, for some of us to check it out, and, but I believe that early October. Um, he'll be throwing open the doors, and that is a project that we have long anticipated, an opening. Again, that is, that is intended to be fine dining, um, up on the avenue, which, which I think will, will be welcome. A legacy cigar, cigar lounge, they just opened. Um, I believe it was September one. Um, and so I haven't been in there yet to say hello to the owners, but from what I hear, it's, the, the inside is quite nice and, and people are. Showing up and being quite happy with the space. So, those are the highlights.
Alright, any questions on the EDC report? Seeing none, looking for approval. So moved, motion made by Mr. Keg. Second by Ms. Bressler, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries on to EAC, Pat.
Well, everyone, you should have a copy of the minutes in front of you from our last meeting on August twenty eighth. Uh, please let me know if you have any questions, uh, the only thing that I really wanna bring up tonight is we have our free market coming up, this is gonna be our third free market. It's gonna be held at the pavilion, uh, this Saturday, twenty third, with a rain date of the twenty fourth, um. From ten A M to two P M, uh, biggest thing about this is we are, uh, teaming up with the buy nothing group for West Reading, why I'm missing. In order to get, uh, more interaction with the public and see about having more people, so. If you have anything left over for fall cleaning, clothing, any household items, bring it down.
Well, the intent is that it's a week after the borough wide yard sale, so anything that you still have left over that didn't sell at the yard sale, we encourage you to bring it down. And keep it out of the trash. Alright, any questions on the EAC report? Seeing none, looking for approval. Motion made by Mr. Lincoln. Second by Ms. Dravnik, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries on to TNI, Chris.
Thank you. Had a good, uh, discussion during public comment on a few different topics at last week's meeting. Think our two, uh, action items have already been addressed with the one way streets and, um. Accessible parking space, so happy to answer any questions. We are keeping our agenda full.
And a lot of public comment, a lot of public comment. Does anybody have any questions on the ETNI report? The new business on there was direction of travel and public works, so. Alright, looking for approval. Motion made by Ms. Bressler. Second by Mr. Keg, all in favor. All opposed, motion Kerry, shade tree was canceled, so Dean, are we still safe?
We are still safe.
There you go, looking for a motion.
There's, uh, two sets of minutes in there, if you have any questions. Let me know, and as said earlier, we have, you guys approved our new safety manual, so, yeah.
Any questions on safety committee reports? Seeing none, looking for approval. Motion made by Mr. Lincoln. Second by Ms. Dravnik, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries, next up treasurer's report, Jeanette.
Good evening, everybody, um, if you have any questions, uh, please let me know.
Alright, first up is the twenty twenty four Pennsylvania Municipal Retirement System Minimum Municipal Obligation Pension Plan, there we go. Uh, so right now, that number, our estimated WT payroll is just over one point four million dollars. Uh, as a result, our minimum municipal obligation is seventy one thousand nine hundred ninety five dollars.
Is this for non-uniform?
Uh, yes, this is the, uh, the five percent non-uniform pension.
Do we, will we have an MMO for the uniform?
We did last. Last month, okay. Does anybody have any questions on the, uh, minimum obligation for the pension plan, non-uniform? Always looking for consideration to approve. Motion made by Ms. Dravnik, second, second by Mr. Keg, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries. So before you, you have the financial statements for the eight months ending August thirty first, twenty twenty three, and also the payment approval report from eight sixteen to nine fifteen. And nine sixteen to nine nineteen of this year. So if you have any questions, let them be known, otherwise looking for, uh, consideration to approve both the financial statement and the payment approval reports. Motion made by Mr. Wirt. Second, second by Mr. Lincoln, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries, alright, brings us to public comment, yes, yet again, is there anyone out in the audience, since there's nobody online? Well, thank you very much, we're gonna get out of here before nine o'clock then, I'll close the floor to public comment and look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Keg, second by Mr. Lincoln, all in favor. Opposed, Kerry.